So Mayor Exchange Day and Lowell is on the same day as that fifth meeting.
But we'll be back before.
Yeah, but we normally have meetings and Mayor Exchange Day all three, but I guess if we have to, we get paid six dollars for that.
I don't mean fifth meeting.
Oh, not fifth week.
From Terry.
I think that's how it works. I don't know how it works, but.
I'll vote for you Dave. I can't say we're relatives because he doesn't admit it.
That's because you had to read Sarah's.
I got it. I did.
And it says.
Oh geez. Turn them around.
Good evening everyone, seven o'clock, like call the meeting in order. Go call.
Barlow.
Here.
Bergeron.
Present.
Brem.
Here.
Devroy.
Here.
McLean. Rezegi.
Here.
Rocha. Stensel Barton.
Here.
Tassava.
Here.
Uh entertain a motion to excuse uh Councilmember Rocha and Councilmember McLean.
I will make that motion.
I'll support it.
Okay, motion by Brem, supported by Devroy to excuse Councilmembers Rocha and McLean. All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, same. Please stand for the pledge.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where our justice stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ready to get a chance to look at the agenda tonight? Well, at least I hope you did. Any additions or corrections?
Uh.
Entertain, entertain a motion to approve.
I'm going to approve it.
Motion by Brem.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Brem, supported by Stensel Barton, approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, same. Also in your packet you have the minutes of the August twenty eighth, twenty twenty five regular meeting. Uh any additions or corrections to that?
Your honor, I move that we approve the minutes of the August twenty eighth, twenty five regular meeting as written.
I'll support that.
Motion by Stensel Barton, supported by Brem, to approve the minutes of the August twenty eighth, twenty twenty five regular meeting minutes. Go call.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Devroy.
Yes.
Brem.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes.
Uh we have no.
Sorry.
We have no public hearings, uh public comment. Uh formal recognitions and presentations, we have Dave Hatfield here tonight, he's gonna give us a little speech, speech on what he's been doing.
Little is the operative word, but I think that's consistent with the being respectful of your rather brief agenda for tonight, so uh not much new at the county. We are nearing the end of the budget process, uh we are nearing the end of our contract renewals with our five unions. Uh we, probably the biggest issue confronting us right now is uh what happens to the Berry-Eaton Health Department. Uh as you probably are all aware, uh Eaton County has, is dealing with some very severe budgetary issues, which has led them to substantially cut their contribution to the operation of the uh district and our agreements, our historical agreements, uh are that we share those costs equally, so the question is, what are we going to do? Uh one of the things that we're working to try to determine are if there's a way that they can separate uh what they're doing for, in some program areas, what they're doing for Eaton County versus what they're doing in Berry County, so that we can still make a larger contribution, but we don't want any of that funding being used to uh replace uh the funding cutbacks in Eaton County. So if we can assure ourselves that that's being done strictly for the benefit of Berry County residents, then hopefully we can find a way to at least sustain some of those programs, even though uh there may, the, the real problem is that over the last four years, uh there have been substantial grants, particularly federal grants, available for them to expand programming, and they have been very aggressive at not only expanding program, but expanding staff. And so now we're confronted with uh what happens when those funds and other funds are, are no longer available, so uh a lot of work having to, to go into that. Uh jail study continues, uh really no progress to report on that, other than our advisory uh committee, which is a rather large, broadly uh composed uh group, uh continues to meet and try to define, you know, key issues. One of the things that's probably most significant is that sentencing guidelines at the state have been changed substantially over the last five, six, seven years, so that uh a lot of uh what most people would term minor offenses that used to result in some jail time, no longer result in jail time. So our jail census is half of what it was five, six years ago, uh which if we built a facility sized appropriately for what we're housing today, you know, that would save us a lot of money, but what competence level do we have that the sentencing guidelines are not going to be, you know, re-imposed? So uh there's a lot of uh not only research, but a lot of guesswork that goes into, into this. If you have uh not been out uh M one seventy-nine toward Na- uh Nashville, uh I encourage you to take a drive in the country, uh heck of a lot of dirt has been moved out of the new COA site. Puddings are now in, so things are uh progressing nicely. And uh COA has had uh very good success so far with their uh fund-raising efforts, uh they've got a little bit more to, to do, but uh things are looking very, very good in that regard, so. Be happy to uh answer any questions that you may have about the county.
You mentioned uh, when does the jail committee meet? How often, where?
Uh it's not a set schedule, but those are open meetings, so it is posted.
Okay, and you mentioned the population census. I heard it, there are forty-six and we can house ninety-something, so we're just like half-full?
We're less than a half-full.
Less than half-full?
Right.
So what I heard was correct?
Uh I'm not sure that those specific numbers are, are correct, but the, in general, yes, you're correct. Uh our census, you know, it varies month to month, but I think our census has typically been running fifty to sixty, and you know, I think we've got a facility out there that could house upward of a hundred and forty or so, and did at one, at, at one time.
I understood what type it was, it was full. Uh one other thing has, and I don't know if this has been, has anyone thought about getting like three counties together to form a single jail, you know, like cooperative?
Uh.
If anybody's thought about that?
In a way, uh I, I say in a way. We have several neighboring counties that have recently completed new jail facilities. They have significant excess capacity, so one of the things that we will be looking at, and probably have looked at, is what would it cost to rent jail beds from them? Uh that's more doable these days because it's now permissible to do a lot of your court work by uh closed-circuit TV, rather than having to transport the prisoners here in, in person, so.
Okay, those were points that were brought up when I was, you know, talking with.
Yeah, all, all of those things will be looked at.
Good, excellent, thank you Dave.
Okay, one other thing I want to report on, since I also uh represent the city, on the uh Joint Planning Commission, uh the, we had a meeting today between uh some of the township officials and uh myself and one other representing the JP, JPC, uh to meet with Myers officials, uh to start talking about some of the issues that, questions that they have regarding the site plan. Uh I really like what I see in their uh early renderings of how they're going to lay that out, uh I, you know, there were, certainly did not seem to be any deal breakers uh on the table, so I'm pleased with how those discussions continue to go. That project, because it's, you know, the way it's proposed, will be part of the Joint Planning Alliance, uh the Joint Planning Commission will handle all of the uh site plan approvals and things, so it will not be uh handled by the township. And that's no condemnation or negative thing to say about the township, it's just that, you know, yeah, this is, the JPA, JPC has been around for a long time now, and this is the first really significant project that we have to work on, so uh I think there's a certain amount of excitement that uh we finally have a purpose.
I'll have a reason to meet.
Yes, exactly.
Do I have to keep canceling our meetings?
Any other questions? You know, I remember years ago, a little history lesson here again, uh when they first built that jail down there, uh what we were gonna do is we were gonna house some of the inmates from other counties, well, that never happened. Uh and then the last, I think the last study they did, they talked about uh doing what Terry said, you know, maybe do the co-op, you know, uh get involved with other uh bigger jails that had room, but they always talked about uh the transporting and all that, it's too expensive. Now with this electronics, that's not the case anymore. But I'm sure you guys are gonna go, you're gonna do your due diligence and uh you'll figure it out, so.
We most certainly will.
We'll, we'll all be watching.
Watching you Dave.
You, you, you and others.
Any other questions? Thanks Dave.
Thank you.
You can hang around, it's gone.
Only because you treated me so badly when I left early. Sit down and observe.
Appreciate that. Uh items for action by unanimous consent, uh we have uh uh six invoices totaling a hundred and five thousand, one hundred and five dollars and seventy-eight cents, these have all been pre-approved, so all we're gonna do is we're gonna accept these and place on file. Do I hear a motion to accept and place these items on file?
I'll make that motion, your honor.
Support it.
Okay, motion by Rezegi, supported by Brem, uh to receive and place on file, six invoices totaling a hundred and five thousand, one hundred and five dollars and seventy-eight cents. Go call.
Devroy.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Brem.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes.
Uh items of business, consider adoption of Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four, designating the city manager as the authorized official to submit the Michigan State Housing Development Authority, MISTDA, CDBG, Housing Improving Local Livability Chill Program Grant Application and to sign the application grant agreement and all necessary supporting attachments. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion, your honor. I'll support it.
Okay, motion by Stensel Barton, supported by Brem, to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four, designating the city manager as the authorized official to submit the Michigan State Housing Development Authority, MISTDA, CB, CDBG, Housing Improving Loyal, or local, oh here, let's start over again, Improving Local Livability Chill Program Grant Application and to sign the application and the grant agreement and all necessary supporting attachments. Go call.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Devroy.
Yes.
Brem.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes.
Uh consider approval of the purchase of water service boxes and installation materials from East Jordan Iron Works for the lead line replacement project not to exceed nineteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty cents. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Your honor, I uh move that we consider approval of the purchase of a water service box and installation materials from East Jordan Iron Works.
I support.
Okay, we have a motion by Stensel Barton, uh supported by Devroy, to approve the purchase of the water service boxes installation material from East Jordan Iron Works for the lead line replacement project not to exceed nineteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty cents. Go call.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Devroy.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Brem.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes.
Okay, consider approval of the airport board's commitment of eighty thousand dollars for the parallel, parallel taxiway exten- expansion to thirty-five feet. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion, your honor.
I'll support it.
Okay, we have a motion by Rezegi, supported by Brem, to approve the airport board's commitment of eighty thousand dollars for the parallel taxiway expansion to thirty-five feet. Questions? Go ahead.
Um Gino's not here, I don't know if anybody would know the answer, does he know what he says in his, in his statement about uh new business, attracting new businesses? What new businesses is he talking about? Does he know?
What this is gonna do, if, and uh one of the reasons that uh we, we came to you tonight to approve this, because the board approved it, uh what'll happen is uh there's a project that uh MDOT's gonna do for the airport, and it would only be uh twenty-five feet wide for the, for the taxiway. This is a taxiway that runs parallel uh to the main runway. Uh the thought is, if we go to thirty-five feet, uh that'll open up all that property down there that, that the airport owns, so we can get people to build hangers and stuff down there. And hopefully what it'll do, because we'll have a wider uh parallel taxiway, is larger aircraft be able to land there. Right now we have, I think, three jets out there, John?
Yeah, but it was a special type of plane that requires thirty-five feet instead of twenty-five feet.
We already have a few, but if we already have thirty-five feet, we wanna continue the
thirty-five feet instead of going to twenty-five.
Oh, it's the continuation of the, the north side taxiway that.
The taxiway along the, the landing strip.
I thought, yeah, when I was out there, I thought we talked about everything, this one didn't strike me, it's the continuation of that north side taxiway to thirty-five foot width.
Right.
I got you, I understand now, I'm sorry, please.
So it, it's an M dot expense, I mean, they're paying.
All the, all the projects we do out there are funded through uh FAA, through MDOT. MDOT's the one that does, they help us with all the engineering, uh we have a five-year plan where they approve certain amount of projects, and that's one of the projects we've identified and they've approved. They've already approved extending that uh, that parallel runway, but they approved only as wide as twenty-five feet. We want it thirty-five feet, so we can accommodate larger planes. Uh that would, what that would do is uh open up that area along that uh taxiway or runway, so they can develop it, they can build more hangers down there, and that's where we make the money, by building, uh running the hangers out. Uh we saw a lot of fuel out there, so we'd like to get uh bigger aircraft in, uh get more businesses out there.
So the city would pay for?
No, 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 the airport has their own, they have their own fund, and approving this eighty thousand dollars now, you know, we could, we could do this after they uh started approving that parallel runway out there, but the problem is, if we approve it now, then there's only, there's only a certain amount of engineering that has to be done. Uh all the environmental stuff can be done this time. If we decide we're gonna go thirty-five feet, then we gotta pay for that.
Okay, gotcha.
So there's gonna be more than eighty thousand dollars if we do it later.
When I read it, I was confused who was responsible for what.
Well, at, at one time, the city and the county both contributed forty, almost fifty thousand dollars a year to the airport, and over the years, uh through uh, you know, contributions, uh you know, the airport runway was extended twice, uh a personal individual, and everybody knows who it is, paid to have some of the hangers built out there, and then he gave to, back to the county and city, and we, how we became self-sustaining is we get that rent off those, off those hangers. You know, uh, so it's been self-sustaining for, I'm thinking ten years.
Okay.
You know.
Nice.
And I think we got a pretty good manager out there that's trying to get us as much uh, as far as uh, there, there's people waiting to get in the hangers out there, we have a waiting list, so. Or was I?
Good.
Just out of curiosity, uh you said that we could um attract bigger planes, like how big are, what sorts of planes?
Well, I think they're talking private jets and like that.
Jets, is, is, if I understood Gino when I was with him, it was the jets. I mean, we can handle props and twin props. Jets is a different story, it's a whole different story. Visit with Gino some afternoon, you will enjoy it more than walking a dog. He has so much fun out there.
Okay, any other questions? No other questions, go call.
Barlow.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Devroy.
Yes.
Brem.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes.
Item D, consider scheduling a special meeting on Monday, September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five at seven PM. So tell us what this is about.
Um it's also a request for a public hearing at the same time, um because our PUD amendments require a public hearing at the city council in addition to a public hearing at the planning commission. I don't know why, we're gonna amend it one day, but that's uh the procedure that we have to follow at this time. Um so Copper Rock Construction, that is currently uh building the apartments and commercial building over across the river, have requested a special meeting um so that they can start construction on um the commercial building, they hope to have it uh completed and open by midsummer next year, so the sooner they can get to building it, especially when we're coming up against some cooler weather, um the more likely they will be able to uh keep to their timeline. So there's kind of an extra uh gap between our regular meetings because of the way that Mondays fall in September, um so they have requested uh a special meeting of both the planning commission and the city council. So the planning commission has already agreed to hold their special meeting and public hearing on Friday, September?
Twenty-sixth.
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 Um at three o'clock, and uh if that gets approved, uh which is likely, then it would come to you on that following Monday, the twenty-ninth, which is the same day as the Mayor Exchange in Lowell, uh but we should be back well in advance of time for this meeting. Uh so the developer would greatly appreciate it if we were able to have a special meeting to be able to um accept public comment and move forward on the project.
Any questions?
Your honor, I move that we schedule a special meeting on Monday, September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five at seven PM for Copper Rock Construction's amending of the PUD.
And also hold a public hearing.
And hold a public hearing.
I'll support that.
Okay, we have a motion by Stensel Barton, supported by Brem, to schedule a special meeting on Monday, September twenty-ninth, and also hold a public hearing same time, uh twenty twenty-five at seven PM. Any other questions, comments? Go call.
Brem.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Devroy.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes.
Uh staff presentations, uh policy discussion, we have none, city manager report.
Uh the new monitors have arrived, the new computer monitors, um so thank you for that, they're working much better than the old ones. Um also wanted to remind everyone that Mayor Exchange is coming up, uh we will be in Lowell on September twenty-ninth, and the Lowell representatives will be here with us in Hastings on October sixth, it is an all-day event. Um I do need to know by September twenty-second at noon, so that we have a head count for lunch, we'll be having lunch with the Rotary Club, um whether or not you are attending or if you're bringing a guest, so if you could fill out the form that's in front of you and give me that by that date, that would be greatly appreciated. I have not yet heard what the deadline is for us going to Lowell, when they need to know how many of us are coming, um but I should hear it a couple of days, I guess. Um Mike was gonna get back to me on that, but if you already know and you can go ahead and fill that out at the same time, then that would be great, um but definitely no later than uh Monday, September twenty-second, please. Um just kind of piggybacking off of uh what um Mr. Hatfield said, uh he got to meet with Meyer in the morning, this morning, and uh myself and Vern and Rob met with him in the afternoon, um about utilities, so um a lot of things are moving forward very well. Um we're ironing some things out about who's doing what, um and, and figuring out processes for moving forward and what those costs are, so that's just to assure you that uh things are progressing um towards getting that hopefully approved and, and developed here shortly.
Any questions of the city manager? Uh piggybacking off that, I just want to remind everybody, we need her evaluation in by Friday. If you can either send it to me electronically or, or drop it off at City Hall, and Michael will make sure I get it, uh and then what'll happen is Sarah and I'll sit down, we'll go over all, all the positives and negatives, and uh we'll uh bring it back to City Council for a report, but if anybody that hasn't turned them in yet, can get it in by Friday, it'd be great. Uh Chief Jordan has uh his report, uh anything to add, chief?
Uh sure, just a couple of things. Get my water bottle where I go. We've reported a couple of times, we, the ambulance is now in service, and in the last month we transported ten, uh twelve, excuse me, ten patients, uh within the, eight within the city and two we ended up doing mutual aid out to Nashville and Dalton, so it's doing exactly what we intended to do, it's keeping an ALS truck available in, in the district, so and adding a, another ambulance uh in, in the, in the entire county, so that's, that's great to know. Um calls are still high up there, we're eighty-one percent over August of last year, and we, we did, uh as I mentioned in the last meeting, we did uh exceed our total runs for twenty twenty-four, probably, I think it was around fifteenth of August, and so we're still, still cranking away. We did have a slight reprieve, we were five calls less than July, so, um I think that's it, that's all, that's all I have for the, for good night.
Any questions of the chief? I want to know how your pancake breakfast went.
Went very well. I did bring numbers on that, I will, I'll bring those at the next meeting.
I was there early and there was a lot of people there, so I, I think you probably were pretty successful.
I believe it was around three hundred and sixty people, if I remember right.
Okay, thank you. Uh also in your uh packet you have uh Library Director Edelman's monthly report, anything to add, Dave?
No, sir.
Any questions to Dave? Uh also in your packet is the Water Services Superintendent Robbins' monthly report, uh if any questions, we can get those questions to Vern. Reports and communications, we have none, public comment? You leaving? Or you want to talk? Go.
Just to make it worthwhile, having stayed around for this, you know, long meeting, it, while it wasn't stated, the uh.
You'll state your name, please, sir.
David Hatfield, nine thirty-six West Walnut.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, Dave.
Speaking to you. Speaking to you primarily as the chairman of your planning commission, while it wasn't specifically explained the reason why the PUD for the Copper Rock project needs to be amended, it's because of the inclusion of the daycare facility over there. But that brought to mind the fact that the city and the chamber and the community foundation have all been recognized for their very unique efforts in helping to create that kind of a facility. So the roundtable of the Western Region Childcare Coalition has chosen the city as the recipient of a leadership award, and have indicated that what's happened here has served as a stimulus for some further discussions on other cities within the region to similarly construct significant childcare facilities. So congratulations.
Good, thank you. Okay, mayor and council comments. Any comment tonight, Mike?
No, Your Honor, nothing from me.
John?
Nothing from me.
Dan?
No.
Gordon?
No, sir.
Did I hear it's your birthday?
It was Saturday.
Oh, happy birthday.
Thank you.
Terry?
Any comments tonight?
Yes, sir, as a matter of fact, I do. I had a chance, I talked with Sarah, and I was able to meet with several department heads and our contractor out there at the airport. I recommend every councilman get a chance to visit. I got with Chief Bolter, and we talked about, I listened to Police Scanner, domestic violence and mental health issues, and the support, and the training, and we talked well over an hour. And I got to talk with Chief Jordan about the fire department, and he walked me through it, and he showed me the issue with the bathrooms, and what's positive and negative, and we got to talk in depth about all of them. Vern, Robbins down at wastewater treatment, the water treatment, I saw their labs, and it was like, I don't want to go, keep me here. We talked about chemicals and things like that, it was more of a personal... I was able to talk to them, so when they come here and talk, I have a better understanding of what they talked about. Dan King and I got to talk, and Dan, I swear to God, I listened to everything you said, but I don't understand most of what you do, so I'm not politely like you're way smarter than I am. Rob Neal, he hired two people, did he get hired, the two people he was looking for?
We're still in the process of reviewing applications.
Right, and we talked about his equipment and why, and I was able to share some of what I know about photography, so he could take better photos, so we could understand why he needs what he needs. He lifted a floor mat, and I knew the truck was rusty, I did not realize it was underneath the floor mat, I could see the driveshaft, so I talked to him about that. I got to talk to Linda and her software, and the land usage down there, and finally I got to spend the afternoon with Gino and the airport. I'm serious, if you get a chance, spend some time with these people, you learn so much. I took pages of notes for myself, so when they get up and talk, I know what they're talking about. And I appreciate Sarah's help on getting all that done. That was all I had to say, Mayor.
Well, I appreciate you doing that, you know, the only problem I see, and you left the airport board meeting too early, because that's what we talked about, the runway.
Yeah, yeah. I was...
I really appreciate it, you know, I think it makes this council's job a lot easier when people sitting here know exactly what they're hearing. You know, if everybody walks in the shoes of all our employees, you'll better understand what goes on, you know, and it's not, you know, maybe someday we can explain to the general public why our roads are in shape, because we're not getting the finances, we're not getting the tax dollars back from the state.
Right.
But there's a lot of things to learn, you know, I've always said, one of my favorite saying is, maybe it's too morbid, I'm gonna quit learning the day they close the lid on me, so, but anyhow, nothing else to come for, council? Entertained motion adjourned.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Barlow, supported by Brem. All in favor, aye? We're adjourned, thank you.
Seriously, I left working with you, I was like, I don't know. And I really listened to you, I really did.